All right, everyone. Good afternoon. This is Monday for our Ed Ops meeting, and I am calling the Monday, May 20th, 2024 Education Operations Committee meeting to order. I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes from April 22nd, 2024.
Solved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Public student comment? I'll wait to see if we have anyone. Nope. All righty. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four. And if no one protests on me, I'd like to move two Agenda Items together pertaining to nutrition and then the purchasing. So I'm looking at the Agenda Item Number Four, which is the Paid Meal Price Updates. The USDA PLE tool was used to determine the new weighted pricing average for the 2024-25 school year for Wausau School District. This weighted average is used as a guide for Wisconsin School -- or, excuse me, Wausau School District Nutrition Services Department to update meal pricing for the upcoming 24-25 school year. In addition, the Wisconsin Adult Meal Price calculation guidelines provided by the DPI was used to update adult meal pricing utilizing the pricing SFA option of the Wisconsin DPI pricing. Now, this is going to be informative, and then the next item will have a motion to it, and that is pertaining to Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Agreement. And I'll just let you talk about that when we get to it. So, starting Agenda Item Number Four, and then moving to Agenda Item Number Seven.
Thank you so much, Mr. Boucher. I just wanted to introduce, well, most of you, I think, no, Karen, but Karen Fox, our excellent Nutrition Services Director. She is fantastic, runs a great department, so she's here tonight to walk you through this.
Do I have to push this to turn on?
It's now on.
It's on. Okay. Green is on.
Green is on.
So, thank you for having me tonight. You usually for sure see me at least once a year with these pricing updates and with my cooperative agreement. So, we are going to be increasing meal pricing this school year, and it is -- we did meet our guidance as far as the USDA PLE tool. We needed a weighted average of at least $2.70 across our free, reduced, and paid meals that we have. So, we definitely have that with the pricing updates. We also needed to raise our breakfast pricing as food prices have gone up at least 30% to 40% in most categories of food products, in grocery items, supply items, chemicals. So, all of those things, in addition to labor for breakfast, to get a full breakfast for $1.75, that's pretty good. So, we will see some updates with pricing in all of our guidances throughout the school district for the next school year. Any questions about the pricing tool or the -- there's not a lot to ask about it. I put numbers in, and it gives me a weighted average, and then I try to manipulate and guess what enrollment might be next year, if I might see changes anywhere, and there isn't a whole lot of change that I anticipate.
When you reference the amounts that we need to increase, need is in part our budget, just the finances of it, but there's also just plain requirements by law that we don't have? We couldn't just, if we wanted to, have these lunches be $0.50, like those needs that you referenced are by law, we're required to meet those?
We have to do that, yes. If we don't meet the pricing, we don't become financially solvent anymore as a food service business within the district. And so, then it falls upon the district to pick up those extra costs. So, we like to stay financially viable, and so that's the reason we need to increase some of these as well, so.
Any other questions? If not, moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven.
Okay, sounds good. The Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative, and again, this is something that we have been involved with for the 10 years that I've been here. This year, I think we're up to 59 school groups are in the purchasing cooperative. It's a great group. It provides good pricing for us. It provides rebates. We do a lot of group purchasing, so we do get a lot of rebates back as a district. We are one of the largest districts in this cooperative. We are the farthest north as well in this cooperative, so we provide a lot of good buying power for the smaller districts that are in our area as well, and it provides a lot of really good networking on top of all of that. So, again, I'm looking for your approval to remain with the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative, and we pay a $300 fee to belong to this every year, and it's well worth that money.
Sounds good. So, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education to continue membership in the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative, WizNeP Co-op Food Buying Group, by passing the presented resolution and agreeing to the 2024-25 66.0301 Cooperative Agreement.
Solved.
Any questions?
Jim, just one comment, if I might. Karen, I just wanted to say a huge thank you to you and your staff for the work that you guys do day in, day out, year after year. I think nutrition services is like bus drivers, like many of the other, you know, cool behind-the-scenes things. Usually, you don't hear about it until something goes wrong, and I think it's, you know, it's appropriate to say you guys do a heck of a job, year in and year out, and all the thousands of meals that you serve. So, thank you for everything that you guys do.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'll be sure to let the staff know that, too.
Please do.
They really, really like to hear that. So, I'll pass that along.
Please do.
Yep.
And I'm sure there have been many staff members that you still have today that were here when I was teaching, and I want to give them a thank you as well, because I remember eating many times. Many times.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you. There is, and I don't think this is a question necessarily should be answered at this point, but I want to make sure that you're aware of it. Josh, I do have a question pertaining to the funds and money, and that'll be in the budget item, so I'm going to come back to that question at that time. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Sarah, sorry, I'm real quick on the movement there. I'm going to slow down a little bit so that you can get that vote in there, so, thank you. All right, Agenda Item Number Five. Recommendation for Preliminary 24-25 Budget. The initial version of this year's budget is based on assumptions presented in January and the Budget Reconciliation Plan approved by the Board earlier in April and is being presented here. With that, Josh, go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I don't have my clicker. I don't know what to do. So, the purpose of this is we are here to adopt a preliminary budget that we know will change. It's built on a whole bunch of assumptions and data we don't have yet, but it gives the district the authority after July 1st to continue to both meet payroll and, you know, pay our bills before the official budget is passed at the end of October. So, that's kind of why we're here. We'll walk through the budget calendar and some of the assumptions that were made, and then we will go through it by fund, and then we will ask for this recommended motion at the end of the presentation. If you could move the -- thank you. So, the real -- the budget calendar actually began, I think, in January. We initially shared the kind of five-year forecast model with you, and we've walked through the assumptions and all of those things. But going forward, we have the initial budget that you will approve, and then in August, we will get the equalized values, set the annual meeting date, and bring a recommendation forward for the actual budget and tax levy. And then, through September and October, you know, we will have the student, the pupil counts, we will finalize the budget, and then at the annual meeting, you'll adopt the budget and the levy. Any questions on the calendar? Okay, next slide, please. So, you've seen all of this information before, but just to walk through it again, this is built off the assumptions and the models that you've already seen and approved. So, we're talking about that 3% salary number, the 4% health insurance increases across the board, the revenue limit increase of $325 per pupil, and then the special education reimbursement rate at 33%. Those are the assumptions that this budget is built on. Any questions on those assumptions? No? Okay, this is everything that will change, so a lot, right? Do we know some things or have some really good guesses? Yes, but the fine details will certainly change. So, we have the annual student count, the first one, in September, and then we will get the equalized value. Later this year, we will have the voucher program. That's the private school voucher program that is part of our levy, but not part of our district operating revenue or expense. And then, the tax levy and meal rates are not projected in this version of the budget. They wouldn't be accurate. We don't have all the information to accurately project those numbers. And this initial budget does reflect a continuation of the defecence, the debt-defeasance strategy that we've used in previous years to save taxpayers long-term interest payments, so. Any questions on any of those things? I'd also like to mention this budget will reflect a potential -- our SRO contract, we have our excellent SRO program at the secondary schools, and our contract is up at the end of June, so in the next meeting, we will bring the Board a new contract, and this budget does reflect that change. They are paid out of Fund 80, so that's our community service fund. So, the actual budget by fund, this is my favorite part. So, Fund 10, that's our general operating fund. We're looking at $115,444,778 in expenses, $113,921,231 in revenues. So, that is the roughly $1.5 million deficit budget that the Board kind of gave us the go-ahead to work with, with those salary numbers and the most recent staffing plan. Fund 27, that's our special education fund, $19,693,979 in both expenses and revenues, so you'll have the state aid money along with the transfer from Fund 10. Fund 38, so that's a debt service fund that was used to do a whole bunch of energy projects in the school a number of years ago, so we are -- I think this is our second-to-last year where we will have this, and we're just paying off that debt. Fund 39, that is our -- where we pay off our other debt, our capital debt in this case, so you will see the exact same number as last year, $22,275,000 in both the expense and the revenue account. Fund 50, that's our food service, nutrition service fund, $5,208,448 in expense, and you will see $5,139,500 in revenue. And then, Fund 80 is the $762,000 in both expense and revenue. Now, Mr. Boucher, I think you said you had a question on this?
Yeah, I did have a question. I've had many community members ask me about community people that raise money for lunches and the whole process of, because of the fact that we're federally funded and we have money coming in for our food service and that, what is the need for help in the food service? That's the question, and how does that get covered? When the money comes in from the community to do specific taking care of our students that need help, how does that all work together? I thought this would be a perfect time to have you explain that, and since we're talking about our dietary nutritional program, this would be a good time.
Yeah, thank you so much. So, it's good that both Karen is here and Noel Torson from the business office, in case I get off track on any of this.
I apologize for not getting a hold of you sooner than this.
That's okay.
But it slipped my mind, and I'm thinking, we're going through this, it's a good time to just ask you.
Yeah, I would say, in general, that money that is raised by the community or donated from the community directly goes to support students who may have had a hard time paying for their meals. And as was mentioned in the previous presentation, we do have a great deal of expense that's not covered in our food service fund, so that is why we do ask staff, students, to pay for their meals. And so, those donations help to cover that shortfall, and, you know, we appreciate the generous donations from the community.
So, there is a specific need for that money that usually is not taken care of by the federal and
Yes.
-- need help in covering our needs, correct?
Yes.
There also is, unless something has changed, when I talked before about how we actually need to charge is, and Karen can correct me if something's changed, but we can't be seen as subsidizing our students who aren't on free and reduced lunch
Correct.
-- by using the federal funds. So, in order for us to get our free and reduced lunch funds for those students, there is a minimum amount we have to charge our other students, otherwise it'll be seen as you're using the federal funds to pay for students who don't qualify for free and reduced lunch.
Yeah, and they will not allow that. So, like, if I can use an example, the recent one with Mr. Yao Yang, who did the GoFundMe, which we received those monies last week. We got the physical check. Those monies, we apply, we start with the free, the students who are receiving free meals right now. They accumulate balances. Many of them haven't been free since the beginning, okay? A lot of them struggled or didn't fill out the application. That's the hardest part. That's where we struggle the most with a lot of the families. They just don't want to fill out the application, or they forget to fill out the application, or there is numerous reasons. So, the entire time, they're accruing debt, and because we do have a policy that says we're going to cut you off at negative $20, but a lot of times, when they come to the window or they come to the end of the line, if there's food on that tray, we do not take it off. We do not deny a meal. So, as long -- but we will make it reimbursable. You're not going to get two eggs and chips, three cookies, plus a big -- two sandwiches. We're going to make it reimbursable, so you still have a meal and adequate nutrition, but you're not going to have all these extras to run meal accounts up. So, that's how debt starts to get accrued. Also, the Wausau School Forest, our fifth graders, I think it is, stay overnight. They have overnight for two nights at the forest. So, we have to charge them for supper, two suppers and two snacks, and a lot of families can't, you know, they can't swing that. So, many times when we get donations, we -- it will be specific. Karen, we want this to go to Hawthorne Hills Elementary, or I went to Franklin, so I want these monies to go to Franklin students. So, we wipe all of that out, but it's a revolving door, just like the monies we received for Wausau East specific, that $1,500 check. We went through and we eliminated all the balances within a half an hour. Stuff was tallying up already, because that's the nature of this beast, is that it just kind of is a revolving door. But we always start with the students that are free and reduced, wipe those balances, and then work our way up through the paid. We have some balances that are negative $200, $300, because it's a family, you know, account. So, there's several students on that same balance. We make phone calls. Our staff make phone calls. We send letters now with our new software. It's an email. We can email. So, there's a lot of different ways we're trying to contact people. We don't want to be harassing, you know? There's a line, a fine line. I talk with a lot of parents, and so we do the best we can that way, but that's what that money is earmarked for. It gets right to the balances, so we can wipe them out.
Not wanting to put you on the spot, but when I keep on thinking about this, this is something that needs to be talked about so people do hear what's going on. My, as Shakespeare once said in Hamlet, his thoughts are pregnant, and is a method to his madness. This was getting the information out, because I think we need to know that as a Board, but the community needs to know that as well when it comes to how we have to deal with getting enough food for our students. So, I take five minutes to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Yep.
Any other questions on the budget? I want to reemphasize that it is a best guess at this point and that it most certainly will change.
No questions? Okay, I am seeking a motion to approve of the preliminary budgets as presented in order to proceed with 2024-25 expenditures committed to before final budgets are approved.
All moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Abstention. All right, now Agenda Item Number Six. We're taking a look at Neola Policy. Dr. Hiltz, as you have done in the past, you walked us through this, if you would do that again, and I think there are going to be some questions about some of the policies as we move along.
Right, yep, absolutely. Just a quick reminder for everybody, we get twice annually, we get an update from Neola. These recommendations are based on state and federal statutory changes, and the team from Neola gives us draft recommendations that we administratively make our best guess at what the Board would want, but these are truly Board policies, and so we bring them to you for review and ultimately approval. So, I will just list each one, and if there are any questions, that way we make sure we catch everything. If there's any questions, then we will certainly respond to those. So, anything in the definitions, the O-100. Okay. 122, Board Powers. Next is 144.3, Conflicts of Interest. Next is the Position of Clerk, 171.3. And 24.13, Health Education. Would you like --
Yeah.
-- get a question on that one?
Yeah, my biggest is in that second paragraph, was there some sort of change that we would remove about district shall notify the parents in advance of the, you know, topics and content of the
Oh, okay, sure. Let me go to
I had that same question, and I think if you scroll down, I think it's because it's covered. It's just, it's down here later.
It looks like it was taken away
Just changed the
And then added at the bottom.
It's still there, it's just it's not repeated twice.
Okay.
Let me find that to make sure, because I had the same note.
I'm reading it here. It's under end of options.
Instruction in
Yeah, the second paragraph.
Oh, sure.
You see that? It looks like it was taken away and then added.
They just moved it underneath that piece specifically, yeah. And part of it, the reason they moved it was a statutory change on notification. So, now, the notice will apply to instructions in physiology and hygiene, not on every topic in the health, in the health course.
All right.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm aware of, I was reading state statute stuff, too.
All right. All right, thank you. Everybody good on 24.13, then? All right. 24.60.03, Independent Educational Evaluation. 55.17.
You know what? I'm going to have something on that one.
All right. What would you like to know?
I'm, I find it mostly okay, but I think the problem with the policy is under enforcement, lack of enforcement, lax. I think part of this is with the form, which is very difficult to find. I think we need to have our class leaders, our classrooms, our office have printed-out forms readily available for students and witnesses. It just seems it needs a little oomph added to it.
Okay. So, the policy itself, you're okay with?
Yep.
Okay. I will tell you that this is a, this topic, harassment, discrimination, it's a front-of-mind topic for us, and I appreciate your suggestions, Jane. I will tell you that in most cases, when someone has a complaint about harassment or discrimination, there is a conversation with the person who's having that, who has that concern, and we always give them a copy of the policy. We always kind of walk them through the complaint process. So, we could certainly do printed copies, if that's an interest. I really, what I, the only concern I would have with that is it's a complicated process, a lot of timelines, and I think that personal touch, that description, probably adds a lot more value than just being able to pick up a piece of paper, but that would be my first reaction to it. I don't know. Kayla, this is kind of your, one of your main areas. Do you have anything you'd add to that, or?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it could be clear on our website and to have redundancy with the thing. I mean, most of the time, this happens.
Can you come up and spare us?
Oh, yep. And you'll have to turn on the mic, Kayla.
Like I said, I think the redundancy is important, that not only can you have the conversation with building principal or teacher, who it might be, but then to be able to direct folks to where to get that. So, I wonder if we look at our website, if it would be clear on there that we could direct people in that direction.
It just seems, and it's not this district, it's every district, everywhere. I just think any barrier we have that prevents kids from, or witnesses from coming forward is a barrier we need to eliminate. I had one of my popcorn moms witness one student slapping another one, and she didn't know what to do, and so she did nothing. And I just think we want everything out in the open and put some sunshine on this so we can do something about it.
All right.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
So, it seems to be more of a procedural thing, correct?
All right. Let's see here. All right. Yep, 56.10, Suspension and Expulsion.
I have a question on this one. There's a removal of orguardian in a few different spots. Just wondering what the reason for that was.
Okay, let me, 56.10. I'm going down to the, here we go. It says in the overview, the policy is revised to reflect that the term principal is not necessarily limited to the principal, may include an assistant or associate principal. It's also, revision is recommended. Now, I think, and I'd have to go back and confirm this, that there's an explanation, I think under definitions, actually. They've changed the definition of parent to include guardian, so that doesn't have to be repeated. And if someone could confirm that for me, that would be great. If not, I'll have to look that up again. Where did you find that, Cassie?
In definitions.
It is in definitions?
So, in definitions, parent is the natural or adoptive parent or the party designated by the courts as the legal guardian, custodian, or surrogate of a student. Both parents will be considered to have equal rights unless the court of law decrees otherwise.
There we go. Thank you. I remember reading that somewhere.
So, guardian would cover, say, like foster parents and aunts and uncles?
Anyone who has legal authority. Mm-hmm. Yep. Is that good, Lance?
Yeah, makes sense.
Let's see where parents would be. Where guardians would maybe consider that they weren't covered under that policy.
Yeah. And this is a good chance, Jane. I hear what you're saying. Everything that we change in here away from the template is something that we have to monitor every time there's an update. So, I will certainly do what the Board wants, but we have an example, I think, coming up a little later, where there was a change that this Board wanted that was not reflected, and we have to constantly monitor that. So, we lose things, there's a chance that we could lose things if we're not extremely thorough in the review of every policy.
And that's one of the reasons that I don't really love the Neola policies, because to tailor them to our district and to our families, there's a barrier. And I just don't like it.
Right. Yeah. And as long as you bring that up, I'll just, because again, you know, we have some new folks here and other people who are watching, you know, the purpose of Neola is they You know, the, the purpose of Neola is they, is they monitor all of the statutory changes, and they help us make sure that we are, that our stack, that our policies are up to compliance. You're right, they are more rigid, but they are accurate.
And it's to keep up with the legal language of...
Absolutely. Mm-hmm. Yes. That was, sorry, I lost track of my... That was 56.10, okay. Alright, 66.11. Oh, Student, Student Activity Accounts. 74.40, Facility Security.
Just someone has something about security devices in the last paragraph, I made a note. Does that ring a bell?
Let's take a look. In the last paragraph, you said?
Yeah, that's what I put on my note.
If I remember correctly, this is the one that's talked specifically about wanding. So, for students, say if they have, uh, as an example, they may have a vape device on them, that we would be able to use a wand to detect if they had that on them, that was a major change.
Well, that's right. Which we currently do not do.
We, we have not used wanding for students in that situation.
Like a metal detector?
Yeah, handheld metal detector.
We don't do that at any time?
We, we wouldn't, we wouldn't wand, no, not in the schools. If we had a situation where you had a student who you weren't sure if they had something on them, what we'd recommend is call the parents and have them come in, and have the discussion with them to say, hey, we think the student has this in their possession, we're not going to search in that intrusive manner, but we have some concerns.
I always wonder if that's the best approach. And maybe this is more, not philosophical, but you mean, you know, we know of one particular incident in which a kid was not searched, and he took that, his backpack that had something in it, and went and shot up a school. So, I, I would certainly be a proponent of having that option in lieu of, yeah, I know I can tread on, you know, certain, like I said, it's probably more philosophical, but I sure would feel better if somebody had a suspicion that they could take something and, at least verify, or, you know, yes, we do think there's something in there.
Yeah. And, and just like in, in situations, it would be severity of concern, so like in a situation where you thought somebody had a weapon on them, we would include the SRO, and they would come in and they would do whatever search they needed to, but in situations like it, you know, like a vape is a good example of that, where there was been some concern.
Okay.
Just so that the question is out there, I'm gonna follow up by saying, considering the fact that there have been so many shootings around the country, and there was a shooting up north several years ago, where that, many high schools up north started to use the wand with police officers for dances and things of that fashion. I, I throw the question out, have we ever thought about that? Have we ever done that in the past?
So, in peer program, we do use a wand for students in those situations, we have not used it in our traditional buildings.
May I ask why we haven't, or is there negatives to it? Besides hurting people's feelings?
Yeah, I, I mean, in terms, we would, we would do a thorough search without the wand in situations where we had concerns, we just wouldn't, we wouldn't by practice wand every student who came into the, the building. And then if you talk, like if we go back to some of our safety consultant discussions where he would talk about, we can put devices into play, that's still not as effective as having really strong working relationships with kids who will tell you there's concerns or things are going on, and then we investigate it, follow up. I think if you, if you look at some of the concerns that you guys have expressed, a lot of that becomes because people haven't followed up the way that they need to, they had information that they didn't act on, and then that caused some problematic things. So, you know, it's a, you know, once in a while we'll get in for, or questions from families about metal detectors, you know, why, what we have there. And, and that does become philosophical, do you, do you want your students walking through metal detectors to go into the building, and do those metal detectors really make your facilities stronger and more secure, or is there ways that would be circumventing those metal detectors in different scenarios? So, the culture that we have, the communication, that's, that's more important, as important to some of the, the hardening of the facilities, but they all, they all play a role together.
If we were gonna go down the path of wanding, it would almost certainly be a metal detector that you would walk through, wand, use only for any positive signs, because you're not gonna wand individually every single person, though, because a metal detector itself is so slow that our traffic into the building would be really slowed down, so you'd, you'd have to use the metal detector first and only use the wand when there's, you know, something shown.
If this is an area of interest for the Board, I strongly recommend that we do a little workshop with an attorney, because you also have privacy rights in terms of searches, and the closer you get to a, a human, the more rights they have. It gets very delicate, so that would be a, that would be a thorough conversation you'd want to look at.
Dr. Hiltz, I guess I'd be curious of learning a little bit, maybe what we're doing and could be doing better going forward in terms of vaping, it's, it sounds like it's a huge problem everywhere, and my own daughter talks about it, you know, at our high schools, so, you know, how we can better enforce and kind of root that out.
I think, I think what you just suggested, Dr. Hiltz, might be something that we would want to look into, because I've been on the other side where I have done that. I have brought wands in two different high schools, and it is a philosophical, and I can go either way, I mean, that's a Board decision, and I just throw it out there that it's there, those are opportunities, and I've always taken personally, I'd rather be safe than sorry, type of thing. So, that's a, a Board discussion.
I do under, also understand that there are legalities behind that, and we have to follow certain laws. I mean, that's something I'd be interested to, to discuss.
Okay.
So, the sentence I had a question about is just where we are crossing out, and other security devices that would assist in detection. So that's right above the public access to school facilities line there, yeah, Cassie has it.
I think you reviewed this right, Kayla, do you remember what that, is that another definition?
Yeah, I don't remember if that was specific to having metal detectors, like the walk-through metal detectors, and since we don't have those in place, that we would just add on into the, the wands.
Let's see here, let me see what they say about, um, 74.40.
It almost looks like it's just repetitive, because it says up above, and other security devices on school property, and then it says on other security devices that would assist in, are they perhaps just seeing it as repetitive?
I think so, because if you look at what you pointed to above, it says, other security devices to protect the health, welfare, and safety of students, well, that would cover assist in the detection of guns and dangerous weapons.
Yeah, and in the, in the overview, it says, the policy is reviewed to clarify actors to include handheld wands, and also school event supervisors are authorized to respond to school safety situations when an administrator is not present, so that's the rationale behind it.
Okay. Well, so far, we see everybody's taking time to read all these.
Oh, yeah. Yep, it's great, it's important. Okay.
Just before we go on, I just would like to mention our new security procedures at the schools, in the two years I was absent, there's been a change, and it's a great change, we now take your picture, and it's printed on where you're going. I just think that that's a huge improvement over our little plastic badges in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, 75.40, Technology. 75.44, Social Media. 81.20, Volunteers, I think there was a question on that one.
Yeah, that's the one I asked about, it looks like this was included because Neola suggested an option, which administration recommends we don't accept, and I'm fine with that. But, this is Neola's standard policy, whereas our actual 81.20 references the limited nature in which Board members can volunteer.
Right. And, we checked, that was in the last update to include that, that, that limited definition of volunteering. Cassie reached out, and we will make, for whatever reason, that was not uploaded to our website, so we will get, make sure that that is accurate. So this policy, really, there is no change that we would recommend, we would, we would recommend staying with our original policy. We always bring these to you just to make sure that, you know, what we're recommending is in line with what the Board wants. So we can just pull this one right out and stick with our original, and we'll make sure that gets uploaded. Thank you for that. 83.10, Public Records. 83.30, Student Records. 8700, Nursing Mothers.
I have a question about that one.
Alright.
You go for it, Sarah.
Have we ever had a mother in the building who wanted their, their baby brought to them, because I'm just curious, there's a way that it's phrased in now, the new phrasing, that wouldn't be allowed.
Breastfeeding in the workplace. Let's see here, I'm looking for...
Because they even changed it from, you know, and I understand, I, oh, yeah, I'm fine with lactating employees, because whatever, either way, but it just seems to take away the possibility that they might want their baby brought to them.
Let's see, Tabitha, do you recall, this is the one you had reviewed, I'm not sure which, just so the Board is aware, we split these up into more of our areas of expertise, so this one, Tabitha's, yeah.
Yeah, they, that's a great question, thank you, Sarah. They absolutely, if the timing works for them, and they choose to have the baby brought to them during that break time, they certainly could do that. The same rules would apply in that we have nursing rooms, we call them, where the staff member can go to nurse the baby, or express the breast milk, and it needs to be not in a bathroom, and it needs to be private and locked and all of those things. So we do have a space that we can provide for that purpose in each of our buildings, sometimes multiple, and if they have their own room, sometimes it's their own classroom or whatever, but either option would work. From a timing standpoint, probably most don't have that flexibility, but certainly they could.
Yeah, and Sarah, just, I'm, I'm looking again at the, the overview from, from Neola, and it just says that, again, this is a definition issue, it says that the entire statutory provision only references time for an employee to express breast milk, so that's why the language is changing, but I think you can hear that, you know, we certainly support all the needs.
So it's consistency of language with the law, but our, our known policy and procedure allows for it?
Correct. Thank you.
Jane, did you have a?
Yeah, just the limiting it to one year, when there's a note right here that says that some doctors recommend up to two years.
Again, the policy says one year, but if we have a staff member who goes beyond one year, they still can make that request, and we follow that same process. The one year goes in alignment with the way that the, the rule or the requirement is written in the statute, is my understanding. So, there's a very specific law, we have a poster up in all of our buildings related to that, and the policy is a mirror image of what those requirements are, but just like anything, we would not say no if somebody were to go beyond a year, that isn't a concern for us.
We're saying our policy doesn't mean anything.
Well, I don't think it's that it doesn't mean anything, it's that the policy aligns to the, the rule or the guideline. I will say, I'm not aware of any requests to go beyond one year, I don't think any have been made, but certainly if somebody were to, we would respond accordingly, similar to even just a medical need or something else that somebody would have, in terms of support.
And if I could, you bring up another important point, so policies tell us what were required by minimum or maximum, right? But often, we'll do more than what a policy requires, as long as that's consistent with Board wishes. So, we're often more generous, this just sets the, the floor.
Okay, so it's like a building code, building code, bare minimum, and, okay, alright, thanks.
Anything else on that one?
Thank you.
The, the title, Lactating Employees, was changed from Nursing Mothers. It's just been updated on the title, 8700.
Yeah, Neola made that change for all of their statewide policies to align with the lactating or lactation component of the way the wording is out there.
Yep, alright. 91.30, Public Requests, Suggestions, Complaints, yeah.
On the, I guess, is it the third page? In Section D, where it says Material in Question may be temporarily withdrawn from use pending final resolution, where that's Xed Out, is this?
Let's see, um, yes, this one, we had this conversation, I believe, can you, I'm sorry, can you see where, uh...
Where is it at?
It's under D, and I think it's on the third, yeah, it's on the third page.
Cassie, are you able to find, sorry, I'm trying to monitor the...
67 of 7200 packets.
I thought I was in the right spot.
Down below?
Almost there, there you go.
Alright. Material in question may be temporarily withdrawn from use pending final resolution.
Do they have an explanation?
Let me just check here.
Or that?
This policy is revised to include additional clarification of the procedure and options for review of classroom, and if options are selected, library materials. No, it doesn't really speak to that.
Since it says May, and the very next sentence gives the district administrator the authority to remove it if there's threat of harm.
It's, it's another, like, weak kind of one.
This policy shall remain, shall remain available during the review process.
I don't think we would want to change it to say that it will be removed, because a district in Wisconsin had a lot of trouble with that this year, 100-something books had to be removed, because their policy said if somebody complained, you had to remove them all.
Right.
Until the review is done, now you get 200 books reviewed.
Yeah. And they're not accessible. So, yeah, and I think the, that second sentence repeats. Yeah?
I just want to make sure I'm reading stuff correctly.
Yep, thank you.
Is that a typo?
Lance understands.
Is that a typo in E? So is the C...
I just saw that.
E...
Oh.
Is it, goes from little c to big C?
It does, it's a lowercase.
Oh. Another definition piece, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Alright, and the last one is 61.10, Student Activity Funds. Yeah, tell me about it. Alright, that's all of them, thank you very much, we will make those changes and bring it back to the next meeting. Thanks, everybody.
I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full Board the approval of the proposed policies changes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Certainly, if there are questions in the meantime, if you run across something or something you thought of, feel free to send those. Thank you.
Alright, moving right along, we've already done Agenda Item Seven, so we'll move to Eight, and I'm seeking a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So at this point in time, I'm calling for a special meeting on May 20th, 2024. At this point, would request for a closed session, pursuant to state statutes. Need a roll call vote for this?
I'll make motion and move into closed session.
Second. Thank you.
Sarah, we're gonna skip you since you can't technically go into closed, okay?
Makes sense to me, I was gonna abstain anyway.
Alright. John Krieger?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli? Joanna Reyes? Jane Roche? Corey Sellers?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone.